First up is roll call. We have a full house. Here we have Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Schultz, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin, Councilmember Dominguez, and Councilmember Perezic. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. That includes the city council meeting minutes from seven twenty-two of twenty-four and the July sewer report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is approved. We are now to item four on the agenda. Employees, city managers, city attorneys, city boards, committees, and commissions. First up is city engineer Leo Foley.
Thank you. A quick update on well number two. Well number two is now pumping and they have disinfected the line that goes to the waste to the water treatment plant. They're waiting on one more. Jetco is the people that do integration for the city. And they're just integrating that into the system. Now Danny, I talked to him today and he thought they were supposed to be there next week to integrate. Should be, everything should be good at that point. So Northway, who you hired, is essentially done. And pumping water and things are looking good. On the powerhouse roof, we are down to holding a small percentage of their retainage. It seems to be that you've had plenty arranged to test it out, more than we probably wanted. And I have heard no issues with any leaks at all. So that's all good news. So probably at the next council meeting, we'll be giving them the, what we call returning their retainage and closing that project out.
Okay.
Waste water treatment plant. We have a baseline improvement project that we're in plan or in design right now. We have a meeting this Friday with West Liberty Foods to kind of go back over where we're at, look at some of the prioritization of some of the work. And go through that with them. That is tied to kind of the, um, the rate study and the CIP that we're working on. So all three of those kind of together for future work and what's coming and when. And then the last one is Rainbow Street. I just went over there. There's like one crack on Rainbow and Maxon that still needs to be fixed. Uh, we are still holding all of the retainage on that job. And then the Columbus Beach sidewalk. We're down to one easement and the city manager and I have been working on that. I think we're getting very close to that, you know, and done. That's all I have unless somebody has questions.
Are there any questions for the city engineer?
Um, just in addition to Leo's report, I want to add that then also this Friday, Leo and we'll meet with our, our superintendents. Um, we've been planning these meetings, so communication continues to grow and, um, and, and staff is communicating that that's going very well. Um, and awesome, and we brought up, yeah, yep. And you also finished the utility. So, um, the BIC subdivision, um, we should start seeing, we will see activity as of tomorrow. Foundations will start, you know, start going in tomorrow. So the housing, yeah, the single family homes will be the first, houses to start being developed. So that's good news.
Okay, so, uh, water treatment and, uh, water sewer reports are in the packet. Any questions, concerns? I saw that Austin, one of our employees, passed the test. That's great. Uh, news. Uh, and congratulations to him on that as well. Are there any other questions from?
Um, I did have a question regarding wastewater treatment plant monthly report. It looks like there was one violation. Is that just a kind of an, an exception that happens because of the heavier loadings from the plant? Or do you think that that is something that we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to look at for the future?
We won't have to address that.
Okay.
All we had was a huge load is from West Liberty Foods. I came through the pipe and that's what caused that long violation.
Okay. So we won't, you don't think that's gonna be an issue for?
Apparently we're not in technical, so it shouldn't be an issue. We'd also like to say maybe next month or the month after, maybe we can have city council mayor come down and we'll walk through the plant.
I would like that. Yeah, that would be very good.
Okay. Killing me small. I'm, I have a super nose, so. But I went one time and I was like, oh, I can't get, if you should have seen the former mayor Anderson, he was like all up in there. I'm like, how do you do that? So yeah, I'd be happy to. I'll bring a mask next time.
All right, any, any other questions? If not, we'll move on to committee reports and I don't believe there are committee meetings coming, but I don't believe there have been committee meetings. All right. Item number five, beer and liquor license. A twelve-month, uh, class C, uh, retail liquor license for St. Louis Sports Bar. And, uh, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Now discussion. Is there a discussion?
Um, Chief, have you having any, um, any occurrences or any issues for the St. Louis?
New ownership and quite a bit of information given to us on plans, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. Ayes have it. Um, item five B, twelve-month, um, uh, class C retail liquor or alcohol license for Liberty Public House. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. It is approved. Item number six, vendor voucher claims, um, uh, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nine and six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next up is public comments and/or correspondence. This is the time that's set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business, others than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. And so first up are public comments and we'd like for you to state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Are there public comments?
Yeah, hi, I'm Jacob. I'm with the chief attorney. I just wanted to thank the city for all it did with the parade and picking apart. Thank you to our clerk clerk and our police chief over here, Hauser, for providing all of the stuff that they usually do. It was a very, very hot day, but I think it went well. It was a very long parade and lots of candy. So we were happy. So I just wanted to thank the city for their involvement with that.
You look a little more relaxed.
Do I?
A little more relaxed.
All right. Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Next we'll move to, uh, city council public comments. Start with, uh, uh, Councilmember Perezic.
I think we, I think we all received it as about cool questions and stuff like that. So a lot of that got answered tonight. So, yeah, and more to come.
I think you're right, yeah. Councilmember Dominguez.
Uh, I did receive a question asking if there was any, uh, progress in getting solar for West Liberty. Um, we have not progressed since last year. So are we still waiting for the meter? Discussion.
Yes, um, the, so the meters, but recently we ran into a software issue with, um, our existing, um, metering. And, um, we are not going to be able to proceed with the solar until we're able to, um, update the current software for our meters. So, and unfortunately, um, you know, city administration or utility hadn't been made aware of this, uh, software update. And until we ran into an issue, and so that's how come, um, now let's put a stop on, um, furthering or advancing the solar piece of it.
Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin.
A couple of things. The, the pool, like, uh, Councilmember Perezic mentioned, and then also I had a resident ask me about, uh, there's a pothole at, is it eighth and Kimberly Park entrance?
There is.
Um, that's pretty significant. Uh, and also she was wondering who's responsible for the, I guess there's another hole. When you pull out of the post office drive uh, onto the Brick Street, there's a quite a bit of a divot there. So I, I don't know if that's city or post office that needs to look at that, but we'll direct that over to public board director, you know, we follow up with, okay.
No, that's been filled many times. It gradually degrades and then we fill it again. So it's just one of those things where, yeah.
And then the rain.
As soon as you bring it to attention, it gets filled.
Okay. Thank you.
Everything?
Yeah, that's okay.
Councilmember Schultz.
I received an email from a resident down on end of Eighth Street when this area, um, just with some concerns with some weeds on a property as well as some concern of possible flooding should ever occur. Currently still just working with city managers and at my heart on getting those questions resolved and checked into and something forward then. Can I say?
Councilmember.
Yeah, I want to introduce you to another. Um, I guess you should have spoken before we come to it. I'll give, I'll give my hand to introduce myself.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry if I missed the time to introduce myself. Uh, the college kids and my first time actually being in a classroom.
Good.
Yay.
Yeah, so pretty much I'm just doing my internship here in Iowa. I'm actually going to school in Texas. So this is like my really sweet exchange program where I sell some educational books store door. Um, I actually met Chief Hauser earlier today. I picked up my, uh, permit for my later earlier today. It's pretty cool. I started my first day here when, uh, what's the reading? Where they had, uh, read families buy some educational tools for their kids. Um, it's everything from like teaching little dudes how to read to like helping out families with like homework, like the new common core methods. So like ACT prep stuff for older kids, um, and kind of everything in between until they graduate.
Thank you and welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay. Um, I lost my place here. All right, we're moving on to, uh, new business. Item number, uh, eight. A discussion of an appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty to request Highway Six annexation with Dorsey and Whitney for the purpose of Brew Properties. Request to annex into the city of West Liberty. So we start off with discussion.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite, um, Lea Lee Director Ken Brooks, um, to join me as, um, through our partnership, we've been working on this project together. And, um, I just wanted to, um, for us, we just wanted to give you an update as I know that this has been in front of council, um, a few times. And, um, and possibly you've heard, you know, some public input on it as well. Um, I did place a map in front of you. So the blue highlighted box is, um, Brew Properties who have applied for annexation. What we have accomplished at this time is that you can see with the purple highlight there around Willie is that's the most current, um, annexation completion. Um, All American and, uh, Mr. Don Trader. Um, those would be the two, um, properties to the west. They've also applied for the hundred percent annexation. Ken and I have also had conversations with, uh, Mr. Tom Christensen who owns US Body Works. So that would be the property, um, next there, um, to the east of Brew Properties. At this point in time, uh, Mr. Christensen is undecided about voluntary annexation. So that has, um, put, um, the, the process in um, a situation where we've had to take some additional steps, um, to identify um, what we can do to, um, work with Brew Properties to support um, their request to annex. The first step that, um, Ken and I, we apply to look at, or we apply the eighty-twenty uh, concept, and that's a concept where if you do not have a hundred percent annexation, but you do have eighty percent, um, or what we see is we even have a little bit more, then that would go to the state planning board for their review, um, and approval. Because what they're trying, what their, um, object is to do is to make sure that we're not creating an island. And they're also, um, you know, looking to say, does that fit future development? At this time, we, we had our attorney, John Danos, reach out to them just to have an entry, you know, discussion to have them have a glance over it, um, before we went through the entire process. Unfortunately, that came back as, um, the planning board at the state level was not, uh, did not support that eighty-twenty, um, offer, um, option. So Ken and I, um, have then gone back to look at what is some other options that we could do. Um, one of the recommendations from the attorney, Mr. Danos was, is we could, they've identified Highway Six is a potential annexation, um, that would allow, um, Brew Properties, um, that voluntary annexation and not include, um, Mr. Christensen's property. Uh, and so with that said, the attorney directed and said that that, um, would be, um, a costly, uh, endeavor for them to do the research and to look at that. Um, that was where they indicated, um, in line with Mr. Danos said, um, again, at the state level and from the attorney's perspective, a hundred percent annexation, um, getting, uh, Mr. Christensen's property to continue to work to get him on board, um, to his benefit and, and that also to encourage maybe neighbors to talk with him. So we've shared that and at this time, you know, and we still have an undecided property owner. So what we are looking to do is, um, a consensus of council here is that Ken and I will continue to, um, possibly do the research ourselves, uh, on the highway. Um, we would reach out to, um, the Department of Transportation, um, and, and find out and, and see, you know, what we can do or have them look at that possible annexation. Ken has also, you know, been doing another planning and, and looking at another opportunity there, but you know, we didn't, we don't wanna, you know, make that as a public statement, but we do have that. And I, I think what we're looking for here is just, um, counsel to your consensus that we continue to work on, um, looking at how we can bring the Brew Properties into annexation. And I could also bring that back at the next meeting, you know, as far as cost and expensive I can get, you know, from Mr. Danos if he can provide us, you know, maybe an estimate as what it would cost. If, if Ken and I do a lot of the labor on it, if they give us a figure as to what the count, you know, what the city would be expensing for that, um, to be done. Ken, you wanna add some more on to that?
So obviously, one hundred percent voluntary annexation is the best practice here. It's what we like to see. It's not a, a simple practice, but out of all of the options, it is the most simple and it is the most time effective. And time is really critical of this project, um, as it relates to development plans of some of the property owners. So we really want to be respectful of that and do our due diligence, um, to work, as, as fast as we can while still looking out for the interest of the city and putting out the product. So we're, we're trying to balance that. So, um, Lee and I have been working, as she said, on several different options all at the same time so that we have different choices to present and so that no matter which one ends up working the best, we'll be ready to pursue that particular part.
So, so when you say Highway Six can be annexed, does that mean, I mean, a portion of it with the tanks of the city? And then after that, it relaunches the DOT? Or?
No, that is part of the cost here because technically that would have to be negotiated with the state DOT as far as maintenance goes. To my understanding, currently we don't maintain the highway that does run through city limits, right? At some point that was negotiated, right? So we would then have to negotiate that. The proposal, if we pursue the annexation of Highway Six, it's not the actual highway we're annexing into the ground that it sits on.
Kind of splitting the terrains. Yeah.
And this was really is going to put more commercial business, some commercial business. Yeah, it's currently being constructed now. You see the green space there, that's where we've got in that construction. The other benefit, um, Ken and I discussed, if we proceed with the Highway Six annexation, um, that also gives the city the opportunity to have the right-of-way easement. Because right now at this time, without that annexation, um, we would have to look at running city utility to the north of those properties, which is not ideal for, for the utility. I know, um, so with Leo fully here, um, through our engineer discussions on the Willie property, um, we've already identified that, um, because there is potential for more expansion to the south. Um, we're already looking at lift station and, and how do we, you know, develop that um, extension of the utility. Um, ideally to be able to, um, have the easement down the highway, um, is what we would be looking at because of the, the grade, the flow, the natural flow from a sewer. And we already have a water main that exists at the Willie shovel way there to the front. So I mean, that is, uh, you know, another benefit. Um, however, again, you know, these are, these are the conversations where, um, from a council, I mean, we don't, we don't have it currently identified, um, as our, as, as a, is an expenditure, um, the cost. Um, but these are also things that come up when you have an opportunity where you have someone seeking to be annexed into, to the city limits. We would continue to work with Mr. Christensen. Um, I will tell you, um, Ken and I's conversation, the, um, applicants who have currently applied, um, we've identified with them the opportunity for some, from a, a ten-year, a potential ten-year, uh, tax where they would not have to enter into the city's tax levy that they could stay on the county and coming and then gradually come on to the, the city. Um, but there's also, you know, there is potential that, you know, even if they wasn't going to do that based on what they're paying for tax now at county, you know, there may be potential that they would be paying less taxing tax under the city.
And the utility is cheaper if they're part of the city, right?
Well, for Willie, um, for Willie, they already were paying on theirs. Um, but, and so that was part of, if you're seeking to annex into, if you're seeking city utility, then we annex you it. We no longer going to, you know, wanna participate in providing utility out of our community without an annexation. So.
Does it helps on the finances of it? It's much more of a, a better, you know.
So what, what, back to the original request, uh, was consent. So, uh, is it your belief that needs to be in the form of a motion or does it just?
It's the consensus of council that you, just bringing you up to date. So you have an understanding of the work that's going in. Um, and, um, to proceed forward with getting an estimate from Mr. Danos. Um, and then again, along with that is the consensus to know that, um, the city manager's time and a partnership with Willie, that that time is going to be spent. Um, and we are trying to expedite, expedite the process because every day is costing, you know, the, the property owner, um, from constructing and moving forward on their project. Um, however, we do understand, you know, we, we go exhausted what we can, um, but we continue to be um, transparent, um, with the property owners saying that, you know, if we're not able to meet that, I mean, we've exhausted every avenue we can in order to get there.
I like that idea. I'd be, I'm, um, and very much for the, uh, both of you working together to try and do as much as you can and get, uh, John Danos the information and just move forward on, um, getting all the property owners to sign off on it. And I like the idea more of the, being able to have the, um, what do you call that? The, uh, this, the, um, easement on Highway Six, um, rather than behind. Cause I think in the end the cost would be better that way than it would going behind. I don't know, but I'm taking a guess.
And those would be things that again, we're, we're gonna learn during the process as well. And, um, we continue to work with you as our engineer. Again, we, we know that there is future expansion gonna happen. Um, and, and that's a good thing. And we're already, as we're doing the study with the rates and you're doing capital improvement updates. Um, and we're already looking at that expansion to include utility, um, services to expand, so.
So unless I hear consent from members of the council, um, I think that, um, the consensus is to move forward. We do have a vote on the, listed on the agenda. City clerk, do we need to do anything more?
You're saying the same, if you're just asking for.
All right. I don't want to cut anyone else or off, but. Okay. Item, uh, eight B. Councilmember Martinez, did you start to say something? I'm sorry if I cut you off. Okay. Eight B, um, discussion and appropriate action by the city council on Nicole Rock's, um, school of dance request to use the fire hydrant uh, in the roadway in front of Midwest Bank for their car wash fundraiser. And I need the car wash. So sorry, go ahead, please. Oh, versus discussion, sorry.
Oh, don't you have to make a motion first?
No.
Not on these ones. That's a different style.
Okay.
Is there a discussion? Now, motion.
I make a motion to go ahead and, uh, uh, allow Nicole Rock's School of Dance to utilize the fire hydrant on the roadway in front of Midwest One for their annual car wash fundraising.
I have questions. In the memo, there are multiple different dates with their property. I just want to make sure that the motion is to confirm their preference.
Well, they have, they say they still haven't confirmed the dates according to intent.
So we're okay with all the dates or any of them that they choose? Is that acceptable with the motion?
Danny, do you see any problem with the dates? I don't know as far as water goes.
As far as it goes, we're out against the whole of the, and I drop.
As far as it goes, Robbie gets a hold of me and I drop off, uh, the connection up to the fire hydrant, so.
Okay. All right.
Then, all right, so we have the motion
Yeah.
to approve any of the dates, and I believe, uh, council member Martinez seconded that. So is there, uh, we have had discussion, consent vote, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, and it is approved. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-four zero seven sixteen hyphen one six nine, a resolution to extend the agreement, uh, between the city of West Liberty and Weeley, um, uh, until September thirtieth two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, Charlie.
Is there a second? That's been moved in second, and is there a discussion?
And what all do we extend? Just do we extend just the same?
It's the same existing agreement where, um, the city is leveraging, or the city is, um, the tax increment finance. Um, the existing agreement, um, provides that we levy that tax for, um, the fifty-three thousand for, um, funding to the economic development, uh, group organization. Um, what we're looking to do with the extension, this did expire December thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, um, and we have levied for this fiscal year, so we're already collecting the tax increment for that, um, agreed upon payment. Um, the other part of this is to enter into discussion with, uh, the Weeley Board, um, to talk about the existing agreement, um, talk about, um, director position, um, and, and identify those things with the goal of September thirtieth before we move into the next uh, tax levy, um, requirement.
Okay, so then the amount, uh, given is just from like January one to September thirtieth, is that? Whatever that's. Okay.
There are further discussion? If not, uh, it's a roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
Murphy, no?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Vamingas?
Yes.
Parisic?
Yes.
This is item nine, um, a call for a closed session, enter into a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five, parentheses one, in parentheses, parentheses C, in parentheses, to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure, disclosure would likely, uh, be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there, oh, sorry. You can say to go into closed session.
Motion to approve to go into closed session.
I'm sorry, um, and is there a second? Um, is there a discussion? It is a roll call vote, clerk will call the roll.
Parisic?
Yes.
Vamingas?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Murphy, no?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you all for attending and goodbye. Motion to enter into open session.
Motion to enter into open session.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? All those in, oh, the clerk will call the roll.
Yep, okay. McFerrin?
Yes.
Vamingas?
Yes.
Parisic?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, uh, is there, uh, we, uh, I would entertain a motion, uh, uh, from the city council relating to, uh, employee separation agreement. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the separation agreement for the purposes of avoiding the costs and risks of litigation.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? This is a roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
All right, Vamingas?
abstain.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Murphy, no?
Yes.
Increase it?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero with one exception.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Council meeting is adjourned.